The time is seven o'clock. I call Mini-Word, please join me in. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of Richard Sanders. Run nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we go into the agenda tonight, I would like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for what's happened, the tragic events that's happened in Las Vegas. And as you do, I would just ask that you reflect and pray for those who are victims and those who are first responders. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, I'd like to move on, remind the council, if there are any conflicts of interest on the agenda tonight, please say so prior to voting. And I would ask for a motion to approve an amended agenda. I'd like to move the executive session to a point between proclamation and personnel.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with the changes to move the executive session to women, be George?
Would be between proclamation and personnel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend, accept the agenda as amended, move in the executive session between proclamation and personnel. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ask you to look at the minutes that you have in your packages from the September 18th meeting. I would accept a motion at this time to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes for September 18th meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the minutes. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on into claims. Looking at, first of all, bills in between, you should have those in your package. Accept a motion to accept the bills in between.
Motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a current claims, again, you have those in your package. I accept a motion to approve the current claims.
Motion to approve current claims.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. There any discussion, questions, comments?
I just have some comments. We have a lot of big bills in there that I think need to be. Evans plunge route, we do have that. Two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-two, we did get reimbursement for that. SEH is two-hundred-and-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fourteen, and that's for the airport. And that actually has reimbursements too that we get back. DOT and airport needs, so I just wanted to bring those up, those are a lot of good ones.
Okay.
And we do get reimbursements.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving the current claims say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Wells Fargo credit card. Again, you have a list of those in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve those charges.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the credit card purchases. Are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we have communications from the public. I'd open it up to the public for communications from the public. Could you go ahead, could you go ahead to the microphone?
City council members, my name's Christopher Elmquist. I'm with the American Legion Riders. And on behalf of the American Legion Riders, we wanted to present the city with a certificate of appreciation for their support with our Freedom Ride that we have every year. This year was the best year we've had in a very long time. We had the state commander from the American Legion, and we also had our state representative, Kristi Noem, on that ride. Next year, we expect to have those two again. They've already signified that they'd like to come. I've got with the Legion Riders, unfortunately, they couldn't make it here tonight. It's a short notice, I sort of came up with this this afternoon. So if you'd indulge me, I'd love to present the mayor with this certificate.
Why don't you go ahead and come up front here and give the credit to the public?
It's just a certificate of appreciation presented to the city of Hot Springs in recognition of their support of the 2017 Freedom Ride benefiting veterans and community Legion Rider programs. This is presented by the Battle Mountain American Legion Post Seventy-One, Chapter Seventy-One Riders.
And on behalf of the city of Hot Springs, I'm very glad to accept this. We appreciate all the work that Post Seventy-One does. We appreciate the patriotism, seeing those Harleys move out of the state home roaring and flying those flags behind them. And it makes everyone realize that we truly are a veterans town. So thank you very much. Okay, have we got any other communications from the public?
Yeah, West Drive. I've seen your personnel tonight. You're apparently going to promote Kim Barberia to the city administrator. In years past, the councils felt it necessary for that position, the person to reside in Hot Springs because it's such a kind of a high-wage job. So I guess I'm kind of curious, is this still required, or did this get changed in the job description somehow, or can you tell me that?
The requirement was not in the job description.
So it was taken out?
It wasn't. Harley had to move here within a year.
Was it in this one?
I did not see it in the one that we...
I think maybe Nolan took it out.
Yeah.
So the last administrator took it out, just as professional courtesy, I guess, now.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm just curious, is this going to be a requirement, or no?
That'll be up for the council to decide, we'll be meeting in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Communications. If not, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the proclamation for the Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity World Habitat Day 2017. You should have that proclamation in your packages, and I would accept a motion to approve that, and if it is approved, we'll go ahead and read that this evening on this second day of October.
I'll make a motion to approve the Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity World Habitat Day 2017.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the executive proclamation for World Habitat Day. Are any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I will go ahead and read that proclamation. Executive proclamation, Hot Springs South Dakota Office of the Mayor. Whereas on a global scale, about one in four people live in conditions that harm their health, safety, prosperity, and opportunities. And as whereas, on local level, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five people were homeless in South Dakota in 2017. Whereas, secure tenure not only facilitates opportunities for investment and wealth accumulation, but also provides a source of identity, status, and political power, and serves as a basis for the pursuit of other rights. And whereas, the United Nations General Assembly has declared the first Monday in October is World Habitat Day, a time to unite in worldwide efforts to eradicate poverty, housing. By raising awareness and advocating for universal decent housing, we can change the systems that reinforce poverty, housing, and make affordable homes a reality for all. And whereas, in recognition of World Habitat Day 2017, Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity will continue to build and preserve simple, decent, affordable housing for families in the Black Hills, and will continue to address the lack of decent housing around the world while reducing environmental impact by recycling building materials through Habitat Restores. Now therefore, I, George Cotty, mayor of Hot Springs, to hereby designate October 2nd, 2017, as World Habitat Day. I encourage all Hot Springs citizens to work toward the elimination of inadequate housing. In testimony thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed, the seal of the city of Hot Springs this second day of October 2017. Thank you very much, and thank Habitat Humanity for the good that they do in providing homes. At this time, I'd accept a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I know you've had public comment, but I wondered if I could answer to the proclamation you just read?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
I apologize for extending your council meeting, but Mr. Mayor, council members, Larry Zerman, Secretary of Veterans Affairs, but looking for something to do when I retire, I've joined the Habitat for Humanity Board, I'm also on the Coalition for Native American Homeless. This is from the Habitat for Humanity, and I'm going to read it so I don't mess up the portion they want me to say. To succeed in eliminating poverty housing around the world, in our lifetime, we must promote smart policies and advance access to adequate, affordable housing. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, families who pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing are considered cost burdened and may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care. An estimated twelve million renter and homeowner households now pay more than fifty percent of their annual incomes for housing. Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity's vision is a world where everyone has a decent place to live. Through partnerships like this one, we can become leaders in creating sustainable and transformational developments. We aim to serve sixty additional local families over the next five years and look forward to this imperative relationship with the city of Hot Springs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the city of Hot Springs, your continued support. I might add that over, after I retire from my present position, I'm going to do everything I can on Habitat for Humanity and the Coalition for Native American Housing to house homeless veterans and give affordable housing to veterans. So I thank Hot Springs for everything they've done. I've been here on many occasions. We have our state veterans all up the hill from here, and we are glad to be a part of this great city, the veterans town, and taking care of veterans. So thank you for giving me a minute to read that letter.
Okay, and thank you very much. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Larry.
We'll be sure to add the personnel to the executive session when we go into it because we have the contract negotiations and legal process.
Okay, yeah. Okay, at this time, I would accept a motion then to go into executive session for personnel and for legal and contract negotiations.
I'll make that motion for executive session for legal and personnel.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we will have a decision. Not as old as some. Okay, we reconvene at eight forty-seven. Next item on the agenda is personnel. I'd like to take item A as an individual item. I'd accept a motion to accept Kim Barberia as city administrator.
I'll make a motion to accept Kim Barberia as city administrator at twenty-six thirteen per hour, back to ten-three at seventeen, and that's the minimum salary rate.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Kim Barberia as city administrator. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, since this is an important position within the city, I would ask that Misty call the role, please.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Arlene Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Ann Swartzinbach?
Yes.
Skylar Wexel?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is unanimously approved. Kim, congratulations, you're a new city administrator. Moving on, in personnel, I'd like to go ahead, we can take items B through G as one item. I accept a motion to accept those.
Motion to approve B through G.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, the personnel item, B through G. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, Carol Ann.
We met today, old business, review of the space class time versus overtime, no changes are recommended, but strict adherence to Council Code of Conduct, reading requests for follow-up or directions to staff should be made only through the city administrator. New business, the mayor informed us that Boulder Falls Road Project is on schedule, and that Scott Hayden has resigned from the chamber. Finance officer gave her a report, the review proposed, street sweeper lease, the media policy review for November sixth will be on that admin meeting, a recommendation for approval by the council for cash on hand at the airport as requested by the airport manager. The review proposed a proposal to refinance the sales tax revenue fund for evidence funds. Copies will be mailed, emailed to all council members, and this will be on the November sixth admin agenda. Review of surplus airport, asphalt soil, millings for sale are used by the city, not to be auctioned. Review and approve employees' travel requests, farm and plane voucher proof, notice of state minimum wage increase, and that's all.
Okay, thank you, Carol Ann. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
We met nine-twenty-nine, seventeen, on Friday, and we did have Kim attend, she gave the usual welcome, and hoped that she'd get elected tonight. Shows that. The committee did talk about, or explained a lot of the information to Kim about where the money comes from and for the airport, and how the city interacts with that. We did talk about petty cash funds and new claim vouchers out there, and it was important that those things were taken care of. The October third will have a meeting with Tracy, the state DOT, and that will be about the tax regard. Advertisement with K L J has been really positive, I guess, for some of our things that have been going out there. And we talked about the park getting a space that would be heated because they had frozen brakes this last winter, so he was unable to use it for a little while. Probably got thought out, and that was it.
Okay, thank you, Georgia. Custer Fall River Waste Management District, Ron.
Next meeting is November ninth, we're at City Examiner at seven p.m.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
We'll meet this Wednesday, is it five-thirty, Kim?
Five.
Five o'clock.
Evans Punge Advisory Committee, Scott.
We had a meeting, we discussed getting another committee member. We also prioritized a plan for the closure, and we discussed the eighty-eight RAMP options. Our next meeting will be October nineteenth.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Parks, Recreation, Beautification, Cultural Development, Marty.
We met today, October second, three p.m. at City Hall. In attendance, Mayor Cotty, city engineer Tracy Bastin, Kristis Blaine, Jerry Culligan, Dwayne Stanley, Chris Katkey, the Miller Center facility manager, myself, and Pat De Smith from Rotary Club, and Ryan Spitzer from Spitzer Construction. It's been a big meeting today. Old business, we discussed school park, and it was confirmed, since it had been confirmed that it is not required to remove the existing playground equipment at the park, we are now tasked with determining whether to refurbish that equipment or replace with a playground set that Nolan had received from the city lead. We're still waiting to receive some more documentation regarding that lead playground set. We do have pictures, but we're looking for more documentation as far as actually assembling that playground set. There was a discussion regarding the Brookside Park irrigation system and completion of the picnic shelter, including the bathrooms. We're still waiting for some materials to estimate on the local jobs. City engineer Tracy Bastin reported that work will begin soon on roughing out areas that are slated for the continuation of the Freedom Trail. New business, it was brought to our attention, there are some safety concerns at Yumaker Park, and most involved remnants that are left over from the former trailer park that existed there. So we discussed the possibility of perhaps a temporary closure of the park until these hazards are removed, and that will be brought to our attention soon. Also in attendance, as I mentioned, Pat De Smith from the Rotary Club. He reported that the Rotary Club are the recipients of a seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant for a new stage at Centennial Park. There's approximately four thousand from other contributors as well. They've accepted a bid from Spitzer Construction to build the stage for fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-nine dollars, and they'll now begin funding, fundraising efforts to raise the balance of funds necessary for construction. They hope to have that done by sometime close to spring of next year. That was it, our next meeting will be November sixth at three p.m., and the public is welcome to attend.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Planning and zoning commission, Arlene.
The next meeting for planning and zoning will be October eighteenth at City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bob.
Public Safety Committee met September twentieth at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Chief Coast Officer Shaffer, and myself were present. We approved the installation of the street light to increase visibility in the alley adjacent to the property near Seventeen Thirty-Eight Walden Avenue. Drove by there the other day and the lights probably up. Thank you to Black Hills Power and Light and Billy for coordinating that. In your packets on the info side, there's the final recommended edits from the Public Safety Committee of the ordinance for swine, rabbits, and dog bites, to include suggested changes from the city attorney. It was approved and will be included in the info side for your comments. Final bond schedule was discussed, city attorney talked with Chief Coast Officer Shaffer about the process to write citations related to violations of city ordinances. We talked about a request from Sheriff Coven to extend Yellow Street parking on North River Street near the crosswalks at City Hall and Fairwell, Fairwell, and Ginsburg. Billy is working with the Softco Department of Transportation to see what the possibilities are for linking yellow markings to increase pedestrian safety. Chief Coast gave us a monthly update from the police department. Because of efforts of the police department, the suspect has been identified in connection with recent two-vehicle robberies. Officer Shaffer was involved in the traffic stop netted two pounds of marijuana. The vehicle is also being seized by the state of South Dakota. Taser training for all officers has been completed. The police department will be seeking a grant from Homeland Security for the purchase of three pink car cameras. I have approved by the council, the city would purchase the cameras and then be reimbursed for the cost. Police reserve units, a meeting to begin possibly increasing the number of police reserve officers will be held on September twenty-sixth, I also have an update on that. Neighborhood watch groups, Officer Wind Scout is working on organizing those watch groups. The Public Safety Committee is asking for public support to make this a successful endeavor. There's been an increase in deer within the city because of recent dry weather, and we're asking the public to be alert to deer in your neighborhood and cautious while driving your vehicle. The next public safety meeting will be on October eighteenth at two p.m. at City Hall. I would like to provide an update on the meeting. But in relation to the reserve units, sent everyone an email summarizing our discussions. It was very productive, Chief Coast was there, Officer Chafin, Officer Shaffer, and myself. So if you folks could take time to look at everything we discussed, offer some, you know, any feedback on that, the next meeting will be October sixteenth to continue those discussions.
Okay, thanks, Bob, and do reiterate that deer safety. We saw about five deer crossing the bypass waiting to woolies for dinner tonight, and almost got a little... Public Works, Bob.
Public Works met on September twenty-sixth, Mayor Cotty, Tracy, and myself. The sludge water device ventilation system controls is progressing, and completion of the project is expected within two weeks. Boulder Falls construction, an increase of crews for Boulder Falls construction project has resulted in significant progress of the project. Installation of curb and gutter and asphalt should begin soon. I believe the mayor will have an update on that. We've been working with a resident at nine-on-two Galveston, who had asked the city to stop double billing for water service for two separate structures. There's only one curb stop, about two meters. The property owner agreed to install a separate curb stop for the second service by the end of November, or the city will resume billing.
of November or the city will resume billing for the additional service. We discussed the sewer line extension on Fresno Avenue. The estimated cost to extend the sewer is from ten to eleven thousand dollars. There is sufficient money in the sewer funds to complete the extension. Current system is failing for one of the residents and they have asked the city to extend the sewer line to their property. Existing property owners of the incentive extension will not be required to connect to the extension until their respective sewers fail. Conversion of city locations to solar, a discussion of that conversion of several locations to solar power will resume after a new city administrator is hired. So congratulations. Let's see, and we discussed a little bit in executive, can I say that? Current person contracted to read the water meter submitted their sixty-day notice. The city will need to look and hire someone to replace this individual. The next Public Works meeting will be October eighteenth, two o'clock, City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Sam?
The next meeting will be on October nineteenth.
And Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Scott?
Our next meeting will be on October ninth at five o'clock at the conference.
Voluntary Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting will be October tenth, two thousand seventeen, Hot Springs.
Okay, thank you. Moving on in the agenda to resolution, we have resolution twenty seventeen dash seventeen, a resolution surplus city unusable property. And you should have a list of that property in your packages. I'll accept the motion to surplus that property.
What should you approve? Approved resolution two thousand seventeen dash seventeen, a resolution to surplus city unusable property.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to surplus this property listed. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Are these dumbbells and stuff coming from the plunge? Is that where it's from?
Yes, that is where they're coming from.
They give out places?
Yeah, they've already been replaced. There are some matching sets and some unmatching.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve a taxi license application from Monroe Taxi Service. You do have that application in your packages. And the paperwork that they have met the qualifications, I would accept a motion to approve that taxi license at this time.
Misty, I want to make the motion to approve the taxi license. We're going to list some stipulations.
If I can give them to you as well. It's not the memo. Yeah, I can remember I can give it off. Yeah, didn't I make one today? And I can give you another one if I have a shot.
To approve, approve that qualification contingent upon within thirty to sixty days obtained and provide proof of the required insurance listed in the ordinance, a list of rates and fees to be charged to riders, a state of self to go to business license, sales tax license, commercial, commercial being of place.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that taxi license application with those stipulations listed in your, in the letter in your packages. Are there any further comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. I'd like to ask that item B be tabled until our next meeting. There's been some confusion about this agreement between Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative and the Mueller Center and they need to get together and come up with a concrete plan and that they would have that available at the next meeting. I'd accept a motion to table item B in new business.
I'll make a motion to table item B in new business.
Second that?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we table item B until the next meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Item C on our agenda is a possible motion and discussion to accept a Homeland Security grant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the purchase of three in-car cameras. These are a hundred percent reimbursable. You do have the paperwork for that grant in your packages. And again, this is a excellent opportunity for our police to have updated equipment to protect both themselves and the public in carrying out of their duties. So I'd accept a motion to approve that, accept that grant.
I'll make a motion to accept a grant from Homeland Security for the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for purchase of three in-car cameras.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that Homeland Security grant. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'd just like to say it's a good idea to, you know, have a lot of, it's good to have new equipment for the police and it's also good to have more, you know, transparency and accountability in light of recent events.
Okay, very, absolutely. Thank you, Sam. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We also have item D, a possible motion and discussion to approve the automatic budget supplement of twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars to Evan's plunge building repair for six twenty-one dash four-five-one fifty dash four-two-five-twenty for the roof replacement project. That's revenue that we've received from Claims Associates Insurance. That's the claim that we submitted for the hail damage and the claim number is listed there in your agenda.
I'll make a motion to do an automatic budget supplement of two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars to Evan's plunge building repair for the roof replacement project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that automatic budget supplement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is a possible motion and discussion to approve Cato Forstenson LLP for the two-hundred-and-seventeen audit services. Their bid price is the same as last year at nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus would require a major federal audit, as I understand, right, Misty, for an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. I would accept a motion to approve Cato Forstenson as our auditor.
I'd like to make the motion to approve Cato Forstenson LLP for the two thousand seventeen audit, audit services, nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus twenty-five hundred for major federal project.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do accept Cato Forstenson as the auditor. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. We move on to item F, another motion and possible, another motion and discussion to set a public hearing on the, at our next council meeting for a temporary alcoholic beverage license through the Boys and Girls Club for the Wine and Reeds Event to be held at the Mueller Civic Center on November fourth.
I think a motion to set a public hearing on October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, for a temporary alcohol beverage license to Boys and Girls Club sort of wine and wreaths in that and the Allen University Civic Center.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do have that hearing at seven-ten on the sixteenth of October to set that alcohol beverage license. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion concerning this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion does carry.
Could we do G through I?
We can do G through I as one, one, one item. Again, you have those packages, I had a chance to review the training requests and travel requests in the packages. I would accept a motion to accept items G through I.
I'll make that motion that we accept G through I, travel requests.
Second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept those travel requests. Again, Gordon Wimman, Lloyd Sherard, and Billy Moro to attend various safety and water treatment courses. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving on, Finance Officer report, Misty?
I'd like to start by saying how happy I am to having you partner and congratulations Kim in the city administrative position on the board working with you. Thanks for coming right up to the hot seat. I did provide financial reports through the twenty-eighth of September to council members. A note, due to the timing, these are not month-end September reports. I can reprint them for you. You feel the need to see the end of September reports, but just due to timing, they were printed on the morning of the twenty-eighth after we proceeded in the money from the report. As always, you have the year-to-date profit loss summary report, fund summary report, cash balance report, and investment reports for review. We are fairly close, on track in almost all of the funds. Something I'd point out is the revenue received from the Evan's plunge hail damage has been proceeded in, makes it look like Evan's plunge is at a hundred percent of their revenue for the year, which looks great, but they didn't have that two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand. Oh, we wouldn't be a hundred percent, but they're still very, they're doing very well on track for production. So I'm not putting it down by saying that, I'm just pointing out that that's one of the abnormalities you'll see in this report because we recognize that revenue that you just appropriated and so it'll essentially be spent out and it'll be washed, but.
Excuse me, Misty. Do we have some order? I'd like to quiet in the back, please. If you're going to talk, either whisper or go out. Thank you. Go ahead.
As always, if you have any specific questions about these reports, I know it's a lot of numbers and I hear from a lot of you kind of glaze over when we start talking numbers, but if anything stands out to you, you would like to research or investigate further, please don't hesitate to ask. I encourage and appreciate all the questions you have, but I don't want to overwhelm you with your voice overwhelming more than I can say. As always, if there's something I feel that needs your attention, I will bring it to your attention. On September twenty-first, municipalities were notified by the South Dakota Department of Labor that effective January first, the state minimum wage will increase from eight sixty-five an hour to eight eighty-five an hour. We'll have resolution for two thousand eighteen that'll establish the two thousand and eighteen part-time seasonal employee pay rates. We did the same kind of thing in two thousand seventeen, worked on the draft of that, plan to review it with the department heads that will be affected by the increase and then we'll show it to the council, admin finance, and then the council generates a review. On September eighteenth, we were notified by Rural Development that they approved the additional two-hundred thousand requested for the Boulder Falls Road Improvement Project at the rate of three-point-two-five percent. The finance office is prepared to file the special assessment roll to county auditor on the thirty-first of October, thanks to Mary Hardy for her work on that. There are a hundred and twenty-six lots that were assessed out there, so it's a big job. Make sure we get all that information correct. I did hear from Ron Braden, the auctioneer we hired for the city surplus auction. When I printed this report, I haven't heard back from him yet. I talked to him on Friday. He's committed to coming down either Thursday or Friday this week and we hope to give the auction scheduled and start reviewing the items that we have, schedule or plan of attack for our marketing. And so those of you interested in the items for that auction, hopefully we'll be able to see those online soon.
Misty, is he going to discuss the properties as well at the time or?
Yeah, yeah. We will be doing surplus properties and property, all at the same time. I went over a little bit the engagement letter from Cato, the same as our two thousand sixteen rate. There's a lot of benefits to staying with the same company, but they also were the chief of, I shouldn't necessarily say chief, the lowest cost. They do an excellent job. Anyone okay for their readout, I think you'd all agree. We really enjoyed working with them prior to them being our auditors when they were providing accounting services and then last year was the first year they did our audit for us and it was quite a bit different than the last auditor. They came to us as opposed to us boxing up and sending off the source documents they wanted to review. They came down and spent a few days at City Hall, it was much more effective. It was easier. We did not, we, in our two thousand fifteen audit, we had a documentation that was lost and so whether we lost it or the auditors that we sent it to lost it, we couldn't really prove that, so we eliminated that with them coming. So I appreciate you voting with your confidence to have them do the audit again to share a more successful working relationship. I did also want to point out that we don't just use them for the audits. Anytime questions come up regarding our finances, they're quick and easy to work with and they also have a large team of resources that they can help us answer questions when it comes to payroll or tax issues. So it's not just for the auditing services that we use them and they don't charge us any extra for those questions. And any of you who have worked with me know that I ask a lot of questions and I really fully understand things, so they do provide a very good service to the city in addition to preparing an audit. I think that you have all seen the new claim vouchers that we intend to replace our current purchase orders with. Haven't ordered them yet, but I plan to by the middle of October. We will use up our existing supply of purchase orders and so we do have a couple more weeks for any input if you have any. I just wrote a little note about what was approved or not approved during budget sessions. I put some clarifying statements in there if anybody has any questions. As always, please ask and I'd be happy to go through them. We talked about it a little bit at admin finance and I think we're all very clear that even though we approved budget authority, we are not, when we did that, we weren't approving any purchases that didn't follow either state bid laws or procurement policy when the purchases were made. We still need to follow those. And, Janice?
Thank you, Misty. We really appreciate the hard work and the detailed reports that you provide for us. As far as the mayor's report, one of the things I do want to welcome officially, Kim, you as our city administrator, was a vigorous process that we went through to hire. We did have a hiring committee that's made up of Joyce Farrell, Joe Muller, Misty, Bob, and myself. We did thorough interview, sent out questionnaires and had oral interviews and Kim rose to the top and we're very glad that she accepted the opportunity. I want to thank you, the council, for your due diligence and thoughtful questions that you asked and asked during the executive session and the discussions that we had and I, I think that was very, very helpful to all of us. One of the things that I do want to address that was brought up earlier, and I don't know if Wes is here, but I appreciate the, the question that he brought up. That also was discussed and I think one of the important things, it's important for the members of Hot Springs and citizens of Hot Springs to realize that we do have a council and a mayor that provides oversight to all city employees and all of us are required to live in Hot Springs. Unfortunately, we, we can't always get the best and most highly qualified person to live here, but in the surrounding area, which we consider, you know, our Hot Springs area and I think that's, that's important. But the important part is that we do have that oversight from you and that's our responsibility as a council, to oversee, oversee all of our city employees and if we enforce it for one city employee, we have to do it for, for all of our city employees. So I think that's the way that we can answer that. I do appreciate Wes bringing that up, I don't see him in the audience. I did receive a letter from Cindy Reed concerning the Badger Park cowboy poetry gathering music show, the events that were held.
Show, the events that were held here at the Mueller Civic Center and at our golf course clubhouse. And I'd just like to read a portion of that letter. It said, "The 2017 Badger Clark Cowboy Poetry Gathering Music Show enjoyed a tremendous 20th anniversary event with super high attendance. Without your specific commitment input, such success would not have been possible." And there's a note at the bottom that Cindy wrote, "By hand Rick Holland and I and the next, in the rest of the Badger Clark Committee, wanted to say how much the new sound system and other improvements at the Mueller Center were appreciated." And I know you as a council approver that sound system purchase and you can see that it is making a difference in one of the premier events that we do hold here in Hot Springs. It brings people here and I just wanted to pass that word of thanks on to each of you and also to the Mueller Center staff for the outstanding job they do in supporting events like this. And finally, I just wanted to publicly, on behalf of the city, say a special thanks to Scott Hayden. I know Scott's not here tonight, but he's made, made some excellent contributions to our Hot Springs community as the director of the Chamber of Commerce and we appreciate his ability to market and our community to bring visitors in here to help support the businesses and do a host of events that add to the flavor of Hot Springs. I think it's important for us as a council, as a city, to recognize that we have to be partners working with the Chamber of Commerce and of course, economic development to allow Hot Springs to grow and I think they are a key factor in helping us grow our sales tax base and property tax base. So we need to continue that, that effort. I know the executive board is searching for an ample replacement to replace Scott, but I know that Olivia and Justin will keep the chamber moving forward as they do. So again, I want to publicly acknowledge Scott's contribution to Hot Springs as the chamber executive director, tell him thanks and wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors and thank goodness he's staying in Hot Springs. He'll be supporting veterans at the VA, so that I do want to say thanks. And one final note, I have a picture on my cell phone, there's actually pavement going down in Boulder Falls, so we're excited on that. What was that Caroline? I missed that, but probably a good thing I did that. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you all.